...to the body of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carol, I need your shirt.
Do you? I had a guy in a convenience store, comes in and he starts laughing, "Come on, that's not very nice." And he goes, "I love your shirt."
I need that. Where'd you get it?
Out of town.
Oh, I need one of hers too.
That's probably on the side of the...
All right, we'll start with the roll call. Steve Perrin, here. Carol Heimka, here. Jay Jones, here. Lexi Murphy, here. Jeanne Arum, here.
All right, that is all members present, so we have a quorum. Our first item, one, the agenda is to approve the agenda for tonight. As you see, there are two pages to it, from back I should say. Do you have any changes to this as we know?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the tentative agenda for tonight.
I can second that. Jeanne, with the motion, Carol with the second, to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting. If there's no further discussion or questions, we will call for a vote. All in favor of approving the agenda for tonight's meeting, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carried. And we are, we do have payment claims, claims report, and the additional.
The additional is just that short, that short one.
There's a long one.
This one? And then there's this little guy.
That's, that's what I...
In the back of the packet, I think it's still there.
Yeah, in the back of the packet.
It's for mine. I did say it did somewhere. Yep, I got it.
I always think I got it.
People look at Jeanne.
I will, I will. It's only four of them on that book.
It looks like this, it's almost a blank page.
Okay, maybe I do have it.
I hear you.
There it is.
Found it.
Does anyone have any questions?
I did. This Justin Stamer, it says no blades left, but what was that for?
The, uh, blade we use to clean, uh, the bike path and...
Oh, we just borrow his?
We, we've been borrowing it for years.
Oh, really? You did not know that?
We just...
So we just bought it? Did we buy it then, or we run it?
We bought it.
Okay, cool. What's RESCO? You probably told me, but I don't still know what that is.
Electric Supply Company.
Okay, that you had to get whatever?
That where you go with?
No.
Sweetbrier is, uh, wire that we bought. Electric wire, 4-0, 4-0, 2-0. It's like the service wire for houses and whatnot.
And, uh, back to the safety apparel that you just brought up. So is that once a year you buy so many for the guys, for all of you, or what? That's on the front.
The ultimate safety one, or which one?
It says, um, safety apparel, border states.
Yeah, that's, that's once a year and, um, that's always budgeted.
Yep, it's like 400 and something a person then, for the four guys?
Um, multiples remain king for our FR club.
Oh, for your stuff that way.
Can I bring that up right now? I thought of something. Are you guys, do you guys wear shirts like mine when you're out?
We have, those that we...
Okay, I want to make sure you guys wear those because, you know, people will look at me funny when I have this on, but boy, I tell you what, I can, when I'm driving my truck and I'm loading stuff in and out, I can see people. We're all required to wear them, so. They still want to take it from over.
And who knows about the one to Lindsay, did we approve? Was that for the bathrooms, or does anybody know what that whole bag of instructions?
It's tied to their grant.
He did, yeah, he did the bathrooms.
Yep.
We're just for the, we hold the...
It was, but then the grant came in.
20, 28.
Okay, and then you just, they paid the bill?
Five months.
Did the grant cover it, or what was it?
How much is it yet so far? No, but we have a...
They must have a little bit of extra money because they did, they do the countertop and, uh...
That was partly in the...
concession stand.
Yes.
Well, the bathrooms are getting paid immensely.
They had a, well, did they have to be just for just, just eight people?
I haven't looked at all these other ones.
Isn't the one on the back page, the VC3, Inc., City Hall subscriptions, what's that for?
It's backups, I understand.
What is it?
Oh, I don't know, it's that's different. It normally is like 500 or something.
431.
$431, is that the one you're having on there?
You know what that is?
SCOT.
It's G-City, General City Hall Subscriptions is what it looks like.
Is that this computer software?
Oh.
I assume that's what it is, yeah.
What's the one below it?
Vector?
That's your safety.
Safety board. I think that's just our yearly, well, we have to pay yearly for, for like Lindsay and, I think we add a little money in there for, well, Lindsay's wages and then the vehicle and then the safety supplies that she uses for her safety needs. Fuel for the, fuel for her vehicle.
And this is every...
Oh, she's the safety lady.
She, yeah, and then the, there's 10 towns on that and they all pay a percentage.
Okay.
And this one here, that's your hydra tool, the brown supply.
That is actual, that is curb stops and valves and whatnot. We're just kind of, we're running low on all of our, all of our water supplies, so we...
Ordered.
Start my cup.
Or some of these were done.
Yeah, I'm a little, yeah.
Yeah, is that what you see in here?
Yes. Well, some of them are in here, some of them are in here, so it's very like confusing how vector, we didn't have to pay this for a coin.
Really got the 6,000 and something of the one that just laid there.
Well, since the claim's right on top.
I know, but...
There's another sheet here though.
There's not three sheets.
But then, see, there's one, the same ones in the book, and we got, somebody made another copy of this.
So you think it's all the same?
It's all the same.
And laundry? Oh, okay, then, uh, because I thought, we don't want to double them up here.
Yeah, this...
Okay, so it's over again.
It's duplicated.
Oh, kooky, now I understand. Any other questions or exclamations? Scott or Kelly? So the claims we are approving, we are approving include these four, and that's the only other list, correct? The official report from the 30th and then the October 3rd, four additional claims.
Does the other one notice it?
I'll make the motion to approve. Motion by Lexi.
I'll second.
Approve payment of claims as listed on our claims report and the additional four. Any other questions to ask? Well, yes, I can call for a vote. All in favor of approving payment of claims for September, I guess, or October, uh, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carried. Claims to be paid. All right, your minutes are included in the packet for both meetings, hopefully you have time to read through those. I didn't notice anything. Thought they had it look okay. Thought anybody else seen them, seen anything?
I'll make the motion to approve both the 9th and the 19th.
Motion by Carol to approve all seven minutes. Second by Jay. Any corrections or clarifications? There now, a call for a vote, all in favor of approving minutes from September 9th and 19th for regular meetings, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion approved. Okay, the next one is the resolution to approve the DOT detour request for the Highway 10 West Bridge Replacements.
Excuse me Brenda, before you go any further, I have a letter I would like to read to the group. I know my name is not on the agenda, and there is a reason for that, and that was that I had hoped I would hear from someone before tonight's meeting, and I would not have to present this letter. However, I did not, so I would like to read this letter to you. The purpose of this letter is to provide written proof of the fact that I am hereby resigning as a city treasurer effective immediately. I am unwilling to continue in this position for several reasons, the most prominent of which is my not being allowed to perform in a timely manner the treasurer's duties to which I was appointed by this council and many previous councils. It appears to me that you have no concern that the account balances shown on the office computer and the bank balances actually match. I am not accusing anyone of intentionally making a mistake when posting, but transposition and other human errors do occur. Further, I am not willing to donate the many extra hours that I have spent in the city office trying to complete the reports for May and June while someone scrolls through hundreds of account pages on the computer looking for a number that matches an electronic debit or credit on the bank statement. Actually, in most cases, that is unlikely to be a posting to one account, but in fact requires trying to find numbers to add together from several accounts to equal that total. Another frustration for me is the total lack of communication from your office. When I attended the council meeting on September 6th, I discussed the suggestion that had been made that I not be allowed to take any documents from the city office to my home to prepare my monthly report, and I was told we will look into it and get back to you. I have heard nothing at all from anyone until about 15 minutes ago, and have received no information with which to prepare a report for July, August, or September. You are now three months behind in having a certified report. I can only conclude that this lack of communication is a move on your part to raise my frustration level to the point of resignation. If that is the case, guess what? You won, and you should be ashamed of yourselves for your unprofessionalism. Included with this letter are the three office keys that I was given many years ago, one to the front and back glass doors, one for the clerk's office doors, and one for the drop box in the back of the building by the alley. Here's my letter of resignation, and here are the keys. Thank you.
I don't know if you need to act right now to accept her resignation. I don't have that to work, but I, it sounds like it's not negotiable on her end anyway, but, um, for that matter, does anyone want to accept it?
I can do since it's on, not on agenda.
She added her, that way.
Well, now we gotta come up with another plan.
Well, it can be done house, it doesn't have to have an outside person. I never knew that.
But how are we three months behind?
Well, we wouldn't be doing September yet anyhow.
Only two months.
Two months. Well, because I brought the May and the June, and I, when I got it home, when we got it on the 6th, I checked what we had originally approved from Janice, and neither one agreed. So her and I sat down on May, it took her about 15 minutes to say, oh, I'll bet it's the CD interest and it's the outstanding checks, which is exactly what it was, we clicked. June, we did the same thing, only thing, she was still off some dollars, I don't know if it was 100 and something or a hundred. It wasn't a whole lot.
It was very close.
So she said, I have to look through, but she was working on another thing for Scott and helping with, so I said, we've approved it, but I said, it's still got, we gotta make it match. And so she never got back to me, but I don't know if she finished it that day, or how that went, or if they finished it today.
We've been working on it all day today.
Really? Because it was still off? And I don't know, did they get it?
Yeah, yeah, she found where that, um, where that low amount was.
Okay.
We got that fixed. But it's, we are behind.
And that's, right, so now hopefully you guys can go forward and get that July and August.
She's here all day today, she's going to be here all day again tomorrow, so hopefully we can work through some of this.
Right, and these?
Try to get caught up.
Then these, yeah, and so then we will have to decide, and I think that has to go through the council, how we want to actually have someone do the treasury report. That's the way I'm understanding it. And it can be, um, one of council members, it can be the mayor, it can be Scott, we just have to have two people actually put their signature on it and then it comes to the council to be approved. And the reason we know that for sure is because that's what Prongar does. They have their city clerk and the mayor regulate.
Yeah, their city clerk does it and the mayor.
Mayor goes over it with her? Yeah, and then he signs it, and then that's how they take care of it, and they pay nobody. And that's how theirs works.
Guess there's something on the agenda we're talking about.
Yep, so that's what we need to do.
My guess would be we'd probably have to put it on the next agenda.
Right, and then hopefully we can get two months done, or three months done.
To approve a resignation.
Oh, right, approve that and hopefully we can get ourselves caught back up.
If it wasn't on the agenda, if it wasn't on this agenda.
It talks about removal from our side, not resignations may be made by all council members and officers to the clerk or mayor.
Did they say anything about approving them, or how we go about approving them?
How we approve or remove the resignation? No, it talks about appointments. The council shall appoint the officials and prescribe their duties.
But it doesn't say anything there, even if an appointed person resigns?
I don't think it needs to be done tonight. I don't think it needs to be done tonight.
I don't either.
No, let's put it on the...
Let's put it on the agenda so we do it right.
Yeah, then we do it the right way, and then maybe we can have something figured out how we're going to at least have a discussion on how to carry it out.
Right, just we'll have to appoint, finish it, and as far as the ordinance. Sounds good. Janice, give me a little confirmation, and Carol, from Prongar, on what that means. All right, returning to item number seven on your agenda, the resolution to approve the DOT requests, detour request for the Highway 10 West Bridge Replacements.
When will they start this? Is it next summer, or?
I think it was in March, they wanted to start the detour around March, whether, I mean, weather permitting, when. At one time they were going to do this this year.
Where, where is, I don't know.
We got two years. Yeah, two miles west of town.
So it's like five, up there.
It's... Bud Bud Creek, it's called, it's down over Castings.
Okay, and they're going along Maple Street for the...
You've got to go Clear to Goshen's Hall Place out there, and then the 143. Yeah, four miles south, six miles west. Yeah.
Yeah, local, they call gravel there.
Yeah.
They didn't know it was called Bud Creek though.
Maybe we can make a little buddy, Nathan. You guys just sit there with your radar gun.
I think Mark Lang will make a lot of money with the car wash.
Probably.
I bet we'll get a lot of claims.
Well, he'll be at the paper too.
Yeah. And when next starting this, this summer?
Next summer.
You thought next spring or so?
Yeah, I thought it said in there somewhere, I thought they were going to start in March. They, they looked like they were going to do the one that didn't take as long.
Yeah.
Did you write that on there?
Yep, I read that. Because weren't they supposed to do one, and they were supposed to come like on Maple Street, like the detour, I thought, but maybe this was a different one. I thought they were going to do a bridge, except we had to do that.
That was, that was it, but they were a year off.
Oh, okay. But then they did a different route, because now they're not coming on Maple Street.
No, they are. See, and if anything, if they do any damage to the street, they have a favor, so what do they come in and inspect?
Shows if you've looked on that little map, we'll show it.
They must, let's see about doing that, you know, because they, I remember the original one, they said that when we, they showed, they said they would, you know, if there was any damage, that they would fix it or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's nice. And then will there need to be any more?
Is there a little boy coming in?
I think we might want to...
Sidewalk, crosswalk, yeah. Especially by the bike path.
Can we help you?
Uh, I need to talk to one of the officers.
Well, officers?
God.
Why do you officers?
Which one's on duty?
They both are, aren't they?
Oh, that's cute.
Yeah, if we can, now, whatever happened to the, do you guys still have that flashing thing?
Didn't he say somebody else was using it now?
No, no, the, they, years ago, the, the school put up a, a flashing light up on the highway, and it was laying on the ground, runs by people. And that's actually the school's property, Dan Lord put that up, and that turns on at a certain time every day, he's, because he programmed it, and it flashed, so people could see that, and we got that crossing there. So you've got, you have that then?
It's back on there.
Oh, it's, okay, cool. I never noticed, because I seen the light on the ground that one.
So we have to approve, make a resolution?
A resolution.
There's a written resolution for it, but, I mean, I don't see anything that...
Didn't we approve something?
The 409.
Yeah.
Same thing, and you never rescinded it?
I mean, a long time ago.
I think it was like...
Well, I don't, did we approve it, or did they just say it was going to come through?
I'm not sure.
They just advised us.
It was when we all came on.
Yeah, they just advised us that it was going to happen.
Because I know we talked about it.
Because it was supposed to be this summer, which, if you look at the, they said two years, so they must have pushed it back a year.
It's written that way? I don't know. We could look to see if it was in the resolution book from before.
I don't, I don't...
I don't think we did.
I know we talked about it.
I don't, that's why I...
They, they just advised us that it was going to happen in two years.
And we got, we signed, we're going to sign something, or approve some, I don't remember.
We had to, if we didn't approve it, did something with the insurance, like if they were to, if we want to, if we don't approve it, something with the insurance, but the Maple Street since that just got done.
There you go.
Yeah, that's why they, well, it's, it's very good, it's very, very good.
But then you still have to review the sheet in afterwards, right? Doesn't it have to be specific sheet? Bring each that.
Can we just vote to approve it?
We don't have the resolution, no, it says?
Oh, we don't have an order of rules.
So we don't have a resolution? Well, we don't have a sheet that says it.
We don't have a written one. I don't have a written one.
Special sheet that says...
Can you have it?
What do you have? What are you missing?
Yeah, the information that that goes worse. I think it was in that, originally that was in this. And it's not like a good time anyway to...
Yeah. Or you might get ahold of DOT and find out. Now, who actually, somebody contacted us on this, Scott? Got an email, email from the DOT. I would just contact them back too, and ask them, did we already vote on a resolution on this? Are, okay? Because I know originally, um, I think the first letter that came out was last December. That's when it was first overfied of it. Yeah, we were doing, I think it was a couple of years ago.
I think it was, too, like Lindsay said, I think it was the year we started.
But I don't, I remember approving it, I think all, we just talked about it and said that once this comes up, we better approve it, because if we don't, then we have the Maple Street, with the insurance, they won't, if something damaged, they're not going to pay for it if we don't approve it. If something happens and we approve it, then they're a liability for fixing Maple Street if something cracks or breaks, so that's why we have to approve it.
That would make sense. How long after they do it?
I think we, I don't...
I would think there probably is a...
A whole toy here.
Perpetually.
I would think there has to be an amount.
July ward, once you hit your headlights, it's done for. No, they, I don't think we get anything on...
No, I think we just talked about it, and that's all we talked about.
Because it was supposed to be this summer, but it goes two years, I thought, why? They were doing that bridge.
Yes, there we go. This has all the whereas's in it, that's what I needed, whereas's.
It goes down to the Marcus?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Where are you going?
You're on, all this is this, with this, with this guy.
Yeah, this is the official, it goes with it. So there's a March 1st and November 30th next year.
That's a good one.
I hope they get it before November.
Yeah.
Because the farmers are going to come down Little Street, and it's already beat up pretty bad.
And it says we'll inspect.
But they, they're talking about doing that, sure.
They're going to do the signing.
And they're the dust control, our, our ones that old as my years.
As far as this just says, we don't have to prove it, then you just have to sign it, something on the city, city representative, and then the county's got to sign it too.
Hopefully Carol's on the line about that. So yeah, it says they'll have a written report concerning the condition, you want to inspecting said road of detour and make sure that it does verify, like Lexi said, make sure that they don't imagine anything, that will be obvious.
So here they're going to do the dust control too.
That's a good idea.
Not until next summer.
Oh, I'll forget about that.
You'll forget it by then.
Looks like they got...
We'll get it to you.
So I guess we will, we'll have to put this on the, the resolution for the next time.
So what we need is to approve this the next meeting, is that what you're saying?
We don't, we don't have that resolution.
Unless essentially it's your resolution. It's just not named resolution, it's stating the agreement, the whereas, they would determine... Just not named resolution, it's stating the agreement, the whereas, they determine close it here and here, I'm not gonna read all too. But that's pretty much what it would be, other than having our number of resolution on the top, which we will get after. Do you want us to do that first, just so you have it?
Well, it'll probably go all together, but maybe not. Do you not have a date on here that they're pushing to say have it in by such and such?
It's an email, but it wasn't.
For some weird reason, this doesn't look correct to me.
One three south four miles.
Yeah, look at the.
One forty-three.
Look at the beginning, that's the intersection of Iowa three and one forty-three, that's south four miles to one forty-three.
Yeah.
And then come over, they're going this, they're going that way. They're talking, coming from the west, yeah.
That way.
So our parts of.
Because the, so the, so the, so if I'm correct, this is highway ten up here.
Right.
Right. Oh, yeah, you're right, I was reading the intersection, I would, yeah.
I mean, I.
Yeah, it's that three, it's ten and forty-eight. It's ten and one forty-three.
They're doing three like down by Cherokee.
Yeah, that's, this is highway ten, not three.
Yeah.
This is me, right.
Yeah, you're right.
You'll have to, I mean, you'll have to.
They're gonna have to redo it or retype it.
Or send them a email and tell them to correct it or something, and then we can.
They even have up above here the, right, so the primary island.
There they have Iowa ten.
Iowa ten.
Yeah, there they do.
Yeah, so I mean, I, it's probably minor, but I just wanted to point that out. Isn't that correct?
Yep.
So that's why you can't put it in or anything?
There you go.
And we don't have a resolution?
Yeah, everything else is correct, but yeah.
Yep.
You can correct it. Alright, you have a motion to table the resolution.
I'll make a motion to table.
They say it. That was Steve and Lexi or Jean? Lexi. And all in favor of tabling item number seven? Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes. Resolution to be revised and tabled until.
Yeah, you just have to send them a reply and say no.
Yeah, I'll do that tomorrow.
Right. Okay, uh, yes, we did have an intact down, one that's currently up. Was mentioned last time, our last meeting. To return duties. To Scott as the building permit and not have the building committee check.
Sounds good.
We should have their job.
Oh, well.
Oh, well, yeah. And we actually need a resolution for that too.
Do it as a resolution.
Okay.
So we'll have to have a sheet with that then?
Yeah.
So we know what.
So the resolution, we always have to have that piece of paper.
Yeah.
Right, so they can do it.
Sign it then.
So it's dated and signed in?
Yep. What resolution number we're on. Okay. Do the next number nine the same way?
Yeah, we have to do the number nine too.
So do we wanna table both of them till we have that? And? Till we have all three? Okay. Yeah, new resolution for the rolls, Scott's rolls, please, to table, I mean, a new ta, motion to table the resolutions.
I'll make the motion to table, um, eight and nine. All second.
Lexi and for the promotion and Jean for the second. Any other questions? All for vote, all in favor of tabling resolutions for the two, eight and nine, to, Scott's rolls resume, uh, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carried. Number ten, I'll actually approve the renewal of the class C beer permit for Prairie Market. Just not anything in there. Just this usual, no violations, I assume, right?
Nope.
I'll make the motion to regret.
All second. Carol. For a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the renewal of the class C beer permit for Prairie Market, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carried, permit. Allowed per renewal of the beverage division. Alright, these two, uh, next two items were discussed, um, brought to our attention by Lexi, they do not need to be, have the action taken, but you, we can bring up the discussion, so we have. For to discuss the motion to approve the removal of the decorative downtown trees and repair sidewalks.
Are we, are those trees actually ours or they?
They are ours.
They're ours, okay.
Get confirmation on that?
Well, who do we talk to? I've talked to different ones and they said that they thought Prue Brown did a lot of it, started it, got it going.
But, but the sidewalk is ours.
Yes.
It's in the city right away.
So it's in the city right away.
I know, but I don't think we wanna take all them down. You guys have nothing else to do.
I mean, I think it's.
Yeah, but I don't think they need to take down twenty trees right now.
No, we've got enough of those.
I think they got enough to do at this point.
Okay, then how about, how about next spring we take them down?
Well, let's see, let's, let's take time with it.
We got limbs we need to get out of the wire.
On an as needed basis.
Right, I think it should be on as needed, and the businesses should be the ones that complain. But if it's in front of their place, if they say, hey, I'd really like this out, come to the city or talk to Kelly and he can bring it up, and then go ahead, but I think he has, I think those guys have enough to do right now. And since you guys know how to actually let those dug out, you know, I don't think we need to be doing, what'd you say, twenty some trees? I think there's at least twenty of them, I counted them, I thought, oh, I was thinking there wasn't hardly any left.
No, they, they go all the way down.
Yes, down by.
They're so like annoying when they like shed those.
I know, but we live this long with it.
Flower.
I know.
Not gonna die.
Well, you know, one thing, one thing that I noticed is like when they're, they're plowing snow.
They're in the way.
I know they've trimmed them up, but some of them can be in the way.
Yeah.
And then if you walk down the sidewalk, you can see where the roots have heaved some of the sidewalk, so they're doing some side.
So what happens, so what happens if someone falls like Jean, no offense, Jean, and breaks their job, we're gonna be paying for it.
Well, we've done this for twenty years now, I think we can just slowly get into it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'd like to be positive about it.
Right, yeah.
I'm not seeing anything negative.
Like, I'm thinking let's get something different.
There are some things that have happened over the years, because these trees have gotten larger.
Yeah, they weren't supposed to do that, but they did.
They weren't supposed to get that big, where they were supposed to be dwarfs.
But they like the trees downtown, they're.
I do too.
But if you ever drive down the street, it looks so weird that you have all these trees on this side and this other side.
Then that side is empty.
This side of town is like anti-treeted, this side.
I don't know what's started it.
Tree hangers on one side.
Tree haters.
Tree haters on the other side.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think we just need to meet in the middle and get something.
I think we should put it up to the businesses, if they see that their sidewalks getting bad, call and say, hey, I mean, unless you guys see it yourselves, but.
Well, if it's a tree hazard, let's get rid of them.
Let's do it as, as needed.
Maybe some community members might have some ideas.
Yeah.
There are some getting to that point where possibly a bit of hazard, you can see.
And I think then.
The ones down here by the theater was doing that.
Yes, and I think it should be as on as needed, not twenty trees gone.
You know, do you guys, do you guys trim them up, ever?
Oh, yeah, they do lower limbs, trim them out.
I'm sure I'm gonna be stirring the pot digging these trees down, but sorry.
No, I think it's.
I'm just thinking something different, and if we're gonna be getting new light poles some way down the road.
But I think then when some of that gets going, then we know we'll finish it.
Right.
You know, typically, when they, when they do a tree in the sidewalk, they have a steel grate that's larger than the concrete.
Oh, okay.
That way the roots can expand and the trunk, the tree trunk and the roots can expand out.
Yep. Yep, they're room to grow.
They're pretty big, they've grown.
They have, well, we're trying to figure out a date on them, I still haven't heard that for sure.
What?
I've heard at least twenty years.
Oh, yeah, it's at least twenty.
When they were put in.
Those trees were put in.
Figured in.
It was just after I graduated.
Which is what?
Twenty seven.
Okay. Well, and, um, Dee Saunders said ninety-four, but I thought it was more like closer to two thousand, but I don't know.
Nobody knows.
It's a mystery. Well, it's hard to find out, I suppose we could look in the minutes.
It's a day or two. Too bad Frue's not here, he did all this.
I know.
And you know what?
So I would just say just pick, if they're starting to get better, then start taking them down, and they ask, who's gonna use, they need.
That's what we did with the, I think, three we just took down.
Yep.
They need the sidewalk, yeah, that's, that's damaging.
Then fine, but maybe the businesses could let you know or call the city and Scott could say, hey, we got a couple of them.
Before, I don't know, even like the dead ones, we did take down, we talked to businesses.
Yeah, and I think that's only fair.
Talked to them before we did anything, so.
Okay. Now, do we need a motion to do that?
No.
No, no, we deserve, and I think if looking, going forward, we're possibly looking at doing, uh, some streetlights and.
Yes.
I was just talking to Kelly about that.
Something unique and we could.
You're like banners or something.
Nice project that would incorporate some decorative streetlights and other things where.
Right.
You know, if we remove the trees, that would possibly replace, replace that. Just something to think about.
Right, and there might even be some lovely little committees out there that like to work on that, besides us, that, that can come back with some ideas.
There's a lot of small towns that have betterment committees that went in and redid all their sidewalks.
Then we give some ideas and it's not just up to us to decide and then we can help pick and choose and.
I know that one time we talked about ripping up everything downtown and redoing it, it's gonna get in my ass.
And you know, someday we're gonna have.
We're gonna have to.
Yeah.
You're right.
So that could be part of that, you know, that can be part of that project even.
I was over there a few months ago and they redid theirs and they put new curb and gutter and so far out, and then they blacktopped everything down the middle, you know, and it looks really nice.
Where is that?
Hayward, downtown.
Yeah, I mean, that would be a whole downtown renewal project.
Either whole or Boyden did theirs and they had the same company that did Maple Street and they already got it done. I remember when they were doing, we had a problem with Maple Street.
Right, did they have problems too?
Yeah, they did get it done.
So.
Yep.
Okay, so we will just ignore that item at this point, uh, just do you want to also then have the same effect on them?
No, I think we just need four, four hanging plants.
Okay, what I wanna know is though, have we bought the other twelve, we bought all twelve of them?
We bought, we just, we just, just from last year, but this year they probably gonna go down and be like, this is what we, this is what we want, so we'll pay for it next year.
So we haven't brought them all down there already, or have we?
I haven't done anything yet.
You haven't? Good job. But I really think we just need four.
Well, let's see, because I do like them, I think they're pretty, and I know, yes, you have to water them and all that, I know, I think it looks nice.
What if we put the four in the middle and then on each end of each of the, these main streets, we put one on each side, so then you got.
Where do we, then we might as well put the others.
That's what I'm thinking, we might as well.
Honestly, like, in my opinion, if I have to go out and water four, if I have to go out and water twelve, I still have to go out and water.
I was just thinking of saving, I mean, like, we spent what, twelve hundred or whatever some dollars on flowers?
Well, we did the amount.
Okay, two thousand, twenty-one, whatever, isn't it two?
And then we had KT do all the pots.
And then KT do all the pots, like, why don't?
That's another summary.
Right, so why don't we just do the four hanging pots and then KT does the rest of them?
The brown ones.
I, I think, yeah, I think, and what we should do is probably focus on saving that money and putting it towards, you know, renewal, downtown renewal projects like the streetlights and that sort of thing, instead of spending it on flowers. Don't get me wrong, I like the flowers, I like, I think they look awesome, but.
I do.
I think we could use that money in a different way.
I'm sure we're gonna have some people complain, well, sorry.
Then if we.
We're gonna get asking for an idea.
Exactly.
If we do, yes, if we get some ideas and do a downtown renewal, we can always go back to hanging, uh, flowers again.
We have to make a motion, cause everyone likes an emotioner.
Well, that would save the, you know, we have volunteers out in San Francisco.
Right, doing.
Time. But the thing is, are they, cause I know they're down lower.
The firemen could come out with the new squirt truck.
That might kill, it might make me kill flowers everywhere.
That doesn't work here. Doesn't hold.
Only a hundred PSI.
And I think like the, the cement flower pots, we, we did that once, I don't think we wanna go back to those, cause they were a hassle.
They were, they were a pain.
Which ones?
The cement four, cement four pots.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
But we got all those other colored pots, those are fine, let me do those.
Those colored ones, I think just do those.
Yes, we need the colored ones.
Yeah.
Now, who does those?
KT.
Do you guys water those too?
Yeah, we water those too. So you could do, you could do four, four hanging plants.
I will make the motion to only get four hanging plants for, in the middle, and then we will use, do the other KT's other ones in the colorful pots.
And we'll see how much complains.
Four or how many?
Should we try the four first?
Just four. Just four.
And then keep the other ones here in case we change.
Yep. In case we change our mind, well, four and four.
Well, we paid for them, there's no use in dumping.
I'll second the motion.
Alright, so, a motion by Lexi and a second by Steve to limit the florification of downtown to four hanging baskets and four pots planted and by KT. That will, yeah, so, anyone else unclear or have questions regarding Springs' section of flowers? Otherwise I'll call for a vote, all in favor of limiting down to four hanging baskets and four not cement pots, say aye.
No cement pots.
Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay.
We're gonna get the first phone call.
Soon as it cuts out of the paper.
If we use this as a positive action, that we're gonna.
Yes, I agree.
We're moving to the streetlights. Be able to use this.
We've got a lot of things to do.
I, I just talked to Kelly about those streetlights and he's gonna start getting.
Some of those.
Yeah, well, get the, uh, different kinds and prices, cause.
Your mom?
You know, trying to get stuff more, you know, we might have orders this winter.
Gotta find the move, move up first. Maybe we can get some grants.
Is there any kind of grants?
They're running for the flowers.
Well, yeah, we should be going for grants, like, it's like.
Yeah, isn't that downtown betterment stuff, don't they have to gather anything like that or?
Iowa, real Iowa identification, something.
Well, we're gonna save power by doing LEDs, is that how we do Biden's big plans?
Carbon reduction.
Carbon reduction, there we go. Here, carbon's going right up.
Okay, everybody clear on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gosh, I don't wear T's. The yearbook ad, which in the past was the white sponsor of fifty dollars, which just puts it in the yearbook.
Yeah.
Does that, anyone have any other thoughts?
I'll make a motion to, uh, donate to the yearbook as a white sponsor for fifty dollars.
Sounds good. Okay, a motion by Steve and a second by Lexi, correct? To, uh, do a white sponsorship level in the yearbook. Any other questions or discussion? If you're none, call for a vote, all in favor of approving the white sponsorship level for the yearbook, so say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes. Motion carried, go around tomorrow, I'll be happy to give them a check for tomorrow. Alright, number fourteen, motion to approve Bright Energy Solutions Power Team Educational Program for fifth graders, sharing the cost with.
Have we ever done this, you know, or is this something new or?
We do this every year.
Do we? You go read? So what is it, explain it to me? What do you do?
I don't do anything.
What is it then? What is it then?
They'll actually come in and do the, I take that back. They supply all the information, then the teachers will give the information to the kids.
I made the motion.
I thought we did. Is there anything?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought I'd seen something that I could find.
Utility is about $20 and then once it's class week, it's a lot meaner.
All righty.
Didn't we have that in the package?
Yeah, it's very, that's why I didn't find it either.
So, since it's the 10th year, like, 5th grade is there.
Okay, but the teachers work with them. And Kelly doesn't have to go?
No powerman go.
No power lineman go?
No.
He did his deal earlier this year.
He, he can, he can do more.
Are you gonna be doing that every year?
You guys approve it every year?
So what, what did you do about this time last year?
No, I think it was.
It was in the fall.
He did the power lineman in the spring.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, okay, so that, I think he needs to do that again.
We have, they'll come up with that stuff again.
That was the whole one, right?
Well, that's a whole different thing though.
That was the color book or something?
It was a, not even a silver book, it's a little book.
I even got it signed by Kelly.
I did too, and then I had my son sign it too. Katn signed one and then Kelly signed one.
I'll make a motion to approve the Bright Energy Solutions Power Team Education Program.
And Primmgar shares with us, right? I'll second, I'll answer it.
Okay, I have a motion by Steve and a second by Lexi to approve this program for the 5th grade sharing with Primmgar. Any other questions or concerns or, well.
You have to let it know, you know?
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carried. Okay, the resolution to approve the change to the employee handbook payday to Wednesday. For now, that's your only change there for that, it's just the one word.
We don't need a resolution?
It's Wednesday. Technically, do not.
Just have to file it away in the employee handbook?
Just have to make, because it's in there, yeah.
And you're ready to roll with that, Scott?
We gotta get some information entered into the computer yet for all the employees, and then I gotta get over to Sepple and tomorrow.
Okay.
And show them what we have, just so we can verify that hopefully, hopefully we're ready to go by next Monday.
Okay, sounds perfect. Well, how many you got going with it?
I wanna say there's close to, close to 20. With all the library ladies and, and what we have here. I know there's just a couple here that are not doing it, but.
Okay, well, that's good. But they all get their checks from Wednesday?
Yes.
Whether they're automatic or not. Okay.
I think we talked about this last time, but they have a choice to participate in.
Yeah.
So instead of a resolution, it really just needs to be a motion to approve that you agree to that, it's, again, it's an operational issue, not really a policy change.
Did they feel there'd be like a hiccup with that first time I was doing it, or no?
Didn't think so.
Okay.
I know, um, Whitney did a test a few weeks, well, been more than a few weeks ago now, but just one, and it, and it cycled through good. And they didn't think, as long as they got it by Monday morning or late Monday morning, and then between Monday afternoon and Tuesday, and then everything should be in the accounts by Wednesday.
And your buddy was okay, I mean, your employees were okay by having a change to Wednesday or?
Yeah, yeah.
No complaints, no verbal written complaints?
No, nothing. I mean, there, there was some concern, I mean, I don't think, just a little heckling back and forth, but I mean, nothing.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
That's what I did anyway.
Right, right.
You're gonna hit the pay two days earlier.
Later, later in this case.
Well, it's later than this.
But it's better than what we were talking Thursday or Friday we talked first.
You get paid on Monday.
All you only, you get paid on Monday.
Pretty quick turnaround.
But I don't think it just goes up and down. Yep, you know what he's saying, that's right. Right, and I'm listening, especially with the camera. Because that will be from page.
She's, all right, do we have any other discussion on that or are we alone?
I know, it sounds good.
Come on, let's make balance.
So, they're, just make a motion to.
I'll make the motion to approve the change for the employee handbook from payday from Monday to Wednesday.
I'll second.
And Lexi and me to allow the approvals or change to the handbook, which is stated as in the page here. Section 12.4 of payday. Any other discussion or questions? Otherwise, Scott can answer those for you about how it works or what. Yeah, if you're, if you have a note of report next week, we'll hear probably. Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay.
I just not did that before too.
Aye, sorry, I did not submit to saying nay.
Especially make the motion.
You were under my control, I tell you what to say, I say nay. Okay, open opportunity to address the council. Anyone want to say anything?
I'm gonna probably wonder why I'm here, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I have met all of you, um, I grew up in Paulina, graduated high school here, my wife did, we moved away in 1976. Gone 46 years and now we've moved back to Paulina to make this our, the rest of our lives home, hopefully.
Welcome back.
And I was just curious to know how a council meeting works around here, so I'm here just to learn what you guys do. Glad to be back and thanks for all of your service. I can see a lot of you around, that's awesome.
So are you living in the?
We've been living in the garage.
Okay.
Which is the former Gannett Garage, but as of the last week and a half, we actually moved up to North Willow Street and we're living there now. My office is in the Gannett Garage, that's the main reason for having that is to have a place for my office. My wife's retired, I am not, so I continue to work, all my clients are virtual, Colorado, Arizona, Minnesota. I do accounting type work for them, so.
And you still work for a church, right?
No.
No, what do you do?
So, so I just, I do, I, I'm a licensed CPA.
Oh, okay.
In Minnesota, probably not gonna stay licensed. What I do for companies, you don't need me licensed because I don't do audit, you know, work. I don't do tax returns, I help them with their financials and budgeting and things like that. So I've been doing that my whole life, my whole career. My wife worked for a church.
Okay.
She was finance administrator for a large church, bought a $3 million annual budget up into the cities. And she retired from that in February, so we're just glad to be back in town. We call it living the dream.
We're glad to have you back.
We, uh, we had bought the middle, uh, Jell-O Triplex unit for my mom and dad to live in about five years ago.
Sure.
Which lasted 14 months until they both ended up in the university.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Kept it as a place to stay when we, you know, visited back here and a couple of years ago, we decided to, you know, make the move and started moving towards that. And so now we've, you know, kind of totally remodeled the inside of it and we're in the process of moving it back.
You're getting good at remodeling, aren't you?
We're, we call it investing in the area.
It looks nice what you've done over there.
Yeah, I'm just taking its name because I see you sitting outside a lot in the evenings.
We did, last night or yesterday, we did pull the chairs back inside, so it's not our, you know, evening, we, we call it, you know, so we spend evenings out there all the time. We call it our, our concrete and steel neighborhood. So we still call it garage, it's just.
That's how a lot of people are building houses now, big old machine chairs.
True.
Yeah, you see them, or barns like?
So, again, thanks for all, all that you guys do, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Look forward to the continued improvement of Paulina, so.
You can bring up some of those ideas for our betterment. Or your wife, maybe, being she's retired.
Oh, we have all kinds of ideas.
There you go.
We need to charge the flowers.
Yeah, there we go, there's the water.
I'm, not me, not yet.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to town officially.
Yep.
Good to have people come back and be happy to be here.
Yep.
Hopefully that continues. All right, we're on to reports.
Kelly had a question, please.
Where's Dawn and Ally?
Huh?
Can't touch my driveway?
You got, go from the north side.
I just told them I can't park my own.
By who?
I don't know, they said like I could touch on the driveway if you need to.
You should go to the driveway.
Okay.
It's gonna be one day, Lexi.
One day, okay.
One day, it'll be fixed.
Why can't you drive home? Hey, Ally.
Okay, anyone for, wanted to address or anything else there, I guess? The options for time tracking are still exploring, I think, and your payroll update we essentially did, which is anything else? On that regard, you go for your time, September hours attached here in purple.
What is GIS in those purple hours? Do you have one that's got any mapping?
GIS is the mapping we just purchased.
Oh, it's with that, okay, I didn't know what it was. And what was the schooling for Rich and Josh? Do they take some more now? Hours that they are working on, updating them?
In there, I think the beginning of November, they're gonna, they're scheduled to take their tests.
The tests and censor, is that how they do it?
They do both water and sewer.
Just water and rewater.
Because Max, is he still coming from program?
Yep. Anything from our police department?
Just, we're putting 20 AD in the front now, which is, uh, both out, basically shuffled. The days they covered, we had to shuffle some, some other shifts, so now there's gonna be two of us on some days.
Is he in the academy then, or?
No, that's coming up at some point.
Does he have to do the whole thing or does he just bar? He's gotta do the whole one.
So then you're able to definitely be gone.
And I don't, I don't know what we're gonna do there, nobody's mentioned anything, but, I mean, the, the theory is this is a straight back and forth, so when he's gone and not able to hold up his end, don't know.
That's kinda why we removed the four, like, it never went out of, like, a fact. Because he wasn't giving time, we weren't giving time.
Oh, you heard that.
Unless he wants to work on the weekends, at least, after the academy.
Are there anything else from Scott?
Nope.
It's right after you.
Well, we got the concrete worked on Main Street, trees and a few other spots around town. Had to replace a water line at Doug Myers, we are responsible from the water main to the shut off. And anytime we dig up a line and see lead, we have to get rid of it, so. He had a water leak up by his house and they replaced it from the shut off to his house. When they dug up by the shut off, we noticed there was lead there, so we had to get rid of it. Fixed the overflow pad at the reservoir. Been doing a lot of pot hauling and underground work, um, 100 block in Maple and Park, Lexi's alley. We did turn the bathrooms and got everything blown out at the concession stand, so the bathrooms are closed. Done on some fire calls, set up and tear down parade. Electric disconnects and reconnects, treated lagoons for the last time, I believe. Replaced the curb stop at Carbotech. Fixed the water line, which was the same deal, there was lead there we had to replace at Mary Iverson's. Now I did some pot hauling by Scott Leshers. Had a good sized branch break this weekend at the park, me and Rich cleaned that up. Fixed probably half a dozen streetlights, I believe there's some more to do yet. Fixed electric at the fire station. Got the mud back from Tanborn, had to fix the mud back and get the other mud back, but. I talked to you today about the switchgear. She said, with what we have and, I mean, it's up to you guys to approve it, but it can be done with the money we have, or if you guys wanna get a loan, or what you guys wanna do. I guess I'm just gonna keep pushing on it until something happens, I guess.
Even these.
I think it's about 1.1.34 million or something to get it done. And I think we have 2.1, I got it written down somewhere, we have about 2.6, 2.79 dollars in the electric budget plus 200 in this year's budget. I mean, we could use a lot of that money to get the ball rolling. Get the, because it's gonna take at least a year to get the equipment, so we can start paying for it this year and it would be.
Almost pay for it by the end.
Now, we had an engineer actually do the estimate, does that, do we have to go back to him and have him do?
He just did a, a rough draft.
A rough draft, so we actually have to hire an engineer because it's over the 50,000, so.
Yes.
DGR is the only one around with electrical thing, Beck, I thought Beck was the other one.
They don't have electricism right now, I mean, anytime we've gotten electric through them, the last time it was a guy out of Des Moines that would have to drive here, I'm sure we paid for his hotel room and paid for him to drive eight hours and.
What, so what do we, what's our first thing, do we have to get back, I mean, DGR back in here and actually sign a thing for them to be our engineer?
I need, yeah, they need approval to.
To have them start the process.
Yeah.
We don't have to still take bids or anything?
Well, we'll take bids, but DGR ought to come in and.
DGR already has.
Set up the stacks.
DGR has a lot of our electrical stuff engineered.
I knew you said that, you felt comfortable with them, but, but we still, as a city, have to bid, right?
Yes.
It'll get bid up to different companies to do the work, yes.
Okay.
And does that mean that's something we should put on the agenda about next time to talk about?
Yeah, put on the agenda, then, if you, maybe the DGR guy can come to me and explain what the process is and get everything on if they wanna do that. Like you said, it's good stuff.
Might as well get started on it.
And then we don't have to mess around and spend a hundred thousand on that switchgear. So, I don't, you think we should do it?
Yeah, you just need to.
Yeah. Yeah, find out what it is.
Find out, you said that process, if he can write those, you can get that.
And then we'll have approval then, Roger, to go ahead and be the engineer of choice.
And we do already have, uh, $10,000 to put this year in the budget for, for the electric department.
Well, that's good. Do we, when they do that, do they go by a percentage? How much actual cost is the project, or is it?
I can find that, I'm sure it's a percentage.
Now, with what we're doing here, this, all this new stuff, that will put us in the, toward being able to, uh, next centuries of electrical, we're gonna be good to go underground.
Yep.
And all the, all the stuff you're putting underground is compatible with the stuff. That's another thing we gotta talk about too, we need to dump that, we need to go, start going downtown.
I mean, if you want a lot done, you're gonna have to hurry something, I mean, we've got a few blocks done this year.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, you guys can do down and out.
Yep, this is a good start, this, this equipment will protect. I mean, it's, it's our protection and it's not in the best condition right now.
It's gonna last us.
I mean, that switchgear and stuff, that's what protects our transformer in town.
What was the flash last week?
That was, uh.
If you wanna picture a flash. Was it a scroller or?
It's a turkey vulture.
Jeez, did he get zapped, good?
He tried.
Oh, good.
Mid-America had a problem, I'm not sure where, but Sutherland and Paulina, I think Calumette and somewhere else, all flashed.
My wife walks outside in the grill and comes back in and go, oh, I said, look at the microwave, look at the stove.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it flashed, started on fire and totaled ground and started the grass fire.
Yeah, I got a whole bunch of dollars for.
Two and a half miles?
No, right off the old brick, right on bridge.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I called.
You're fine, that, that's part of the job, I just, yeah, after like the 30th one, you're just like, yeah, I know.
Unfortunately, I sent him the picture too soon, I escaped the photo and closed that and say happy birthday.
There's your turkey right here.
Well, we can get that switchgear on, on.
Yeah, okay, let's talk about that on the next meeting.
Yeah.
You know, and have a discussion about that.
We're gonna have him give a DGR and have him get everything rolled and beat us.
Well, we should get it on the next, next agenda. It's not out here, so.
Yeah, keep your report to us then, what you find out.
On the next agenda.
If you can get them to work with you that fast. Pretty good about it? Okay, Fire Department, Brian.
All right. Well, I may start with the super boring stuff first and then tell you the exciting at the end. So everybody in their packet has our current resolution and verbiage for our ordinance for the fire department. Right now, we do not have a specific hazmat ordinance, which that is in your packets also. What that does is help protect us from the word go if we would have a hazardous incident. Then we can go back and that has our, our legal stuff for billing and all that fun stuff. So. Included there is ordinance from Sheldon, Oregon, Horn City. Sorry, I had to think for a second. So.
Yep, you're right.
I think that is something, and if you look at two of them, they literally the exact same. So I think that's something we can easily adapt and move on. The other thing I have is our service fees. When that was written in two thousand and six, that the rates were quite low. I have attached the proposed rate change for fire service fees. I base those fees off of the annual hazardous material, materials response fee put through the Iowa Fire Service. That's what they have. A minimum rate there. That's something they restructure every year, also un-repost. So as you can see, from the old rate to the new rate, it's a substantial decrease. What this is for, this is not to go out and bill all our patrons that are already supporting us. This is for our other fire calls that like earlier, we had hazmat calls that we couldn't get covered. This will help that. Also, like I've talked before, insurance, we can build insurance companies and everybody pays in their insurance. There's a specific part that gets paid out for the fire department. So that's that. So this would be for that. And so if we'd have a pass through, like, like a regional trucking company that would come through and have access, we could build that. So somebody that's not already on our tax base, so. As you can see, it's personal response. I've changed that a little bit. Where I got some of this information from Nevada. I think, does everybody know where Nevada is? Iowa is, okay. So the fire chief there, as you already announced, he used to be the state fire marshal. So part of this is based on his building structure for the city in Nevada. So yeah, it's just replacement cost plus fifteen percent because it costs us something to replace it and be down with it and getting that money here moved around. Also, the contracted service fees, that's something that I'll probably, no matter who, that will probably get billed out. So contracted service fees would be like if I had a call, an excavator and to do work for us. That would probably get billed out period to everybody, just because that's above and beyond what we do. So that would be the bill plus five percent because it costs something to have Scott or Whitney send out the bill, so. And I think five percent is a very useful rate. Yeah, I guess if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
So, okay, so it's a replacement, you say we would add fifteen percent, right?
That's all on the back here.
Okay, so then why would we, and then the five percent is like, if like, say like.
So.
Like Brian came with us.
If Brian came with us excavator, we would bill Brian's whole bill.
An extra five percent. Got it. Okay, okay.
So yeah, and that's, that's, you know, that's across the board. It's not just something that we do. Cause yeah, I mean, our equipment is very expensive to replace. I just got fire gear in this last week and that fire gear from the last time we bought it went up thirty percent.
Oh, how long ago was it?
So that was twenty eighteen, when I bought my last gear and now this gear. So yeah, thirty percent. Same with our, our SCBA's, they've gone up.
Are you like on a rotation, like who gets new gear every year?
So that's part of what I started, capital expense. So I'm trying to get back into that as a five-year capital expense schedule. Cause yeah, I don't want, I mean, I can get, I try to get every grant out there possible. But yeah, that only does so much and you can only get FEMA so many times. So the first time we got the bulk of our grant, twenty five sets of gear, I got what's the FEMA grant. But I mean, I don't wanna get us in the same position as before, have to try to figure out how to replace it all at once. So that's my goal now is to every other year, get two sets of gear. So like this year, I had a guy come up that was due for gear, a newer member. And then what I'm doing is the second set of gear, I picked one of my interior tech guys and he got a new set of gear. So then we'll keep all the, I've talked to Horn City and Sioux Center. They have a lot of extra gear. So I'm trying to get us caught up so we have extra gear. But like Horn City and Sioux Center, if they would have an interior structure fire, every single interior person takes their gear and that's decommissioned. And they put their backup gear on until that is all cleaned and put back in the service, so. So yeah.
You ever have to dump some of it then, that it gets so bad?
Well, so Gordon Dairy had a tractor fire where a lot of hydraulic fluid and diesel fuel got out and we ruined nine sets of gear that night. So any type of hydrocarbon, like gas, oil, concrete ruins gear. Ankeny had that. They had a rescue situation happen that they lost by five sets of gear from concrete. So yeah, there's different aspects. So some of this gear, we can, like if there's specific spots on the gear, we can send it off and get repaired in specific spots, but like that nine sets had ruined coats and pants, so.
They were covered.
Yeah, they, they were, looked like Dalmatians, so. They're spotted, so. That we actually did an insurance claim on, I guess. So yeah, but I don't really wanna do that again. So that was not a very fun discussion, to say the least. So yeah, that's kinda where we go. Yeah, I guess the resolution as far as our fire billing, I don't know if that legally has to be posted, what our billing schedule is. I'm not sure. A lot of towns just have the ordinance that they have the authority to bill. They don't post all their.
Changes.
Changes, so. I'm not sure why, two thousand and six was way before I was in the position I was in, so. I'm not sure why the resolution was written. Yeah, I'm, I need to do this yearly instead of twenty, well, I'm not quite twenty years, I think, so.
Close.
Close.
And maybe we can write it in there like that, updates as needed, so.
So I guess the big thing for tonight, I just need the blessing from the council to move ahead with the hazmat thing, so I can get that paperwork pushed out.
Cause you have nothing for hazmat, David.
I have nothing for hazmat.
I'll make the.
And that, I, why I'm going this, I mean, right now, in the county, we're covered because the county does have. It's just our city limits that is unprotected, which, you know, I mean, I'm hoping we never have anything, but I'd much rather be protected than wish we were protected. Because hazardous materials, that's the most expensive part.
Or does something have to be, does it have to be written out, like on the, an object? Like even though it's kind of on here to update the hazmat?
Well, we need to see whether we could need to amend what's there or.
I recommend just adding a whole new section because that's what everybody else has done.
Yeah.
They keep their fire service as one section and put the hazmat as a second section, its own section.
I just think even the fees page is, you know, right now is a resolution to it, but.
Can we, so.
Which I, I never even realized we had a resolution. We found that when we were digging for other fire departments.
So does it have to be done, it has to be on the agenda before we make a motion and a resolution?
Probably has to be a resolution to adopt the hazmat ordinance.
And you have the three, they're all three the same.
Yeah. They're not just theoretically all the same.
I feel if we write it up, we should do it like Sheldon's. It's very readable. It's the nicest one of the three.
Well, it looks to me like.
And they're all the same.
Looks to me like it comes from, I, so that dictates what.
How to do it.
What the ordinance should be.
Right, but if they type it on like that.
If you look at the city, city, our city ordinance is that, majority of them are the Iowa code. So yeah, that would be fine. Is that something you wanna write?
Yeah, I can copy and paste really good.
I will make a motion to table it for next, but put it on the next week, maybe.
So we have an actual resolution to do the hazmat.
I'll get all of that typed up and say city of Plena and I'll bring it in.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion to take action. It's just on his report, so he wanted him to explain it further, so we know what to bring forward.
We still have more though, Frank.
Yes.
All right. So our next document discussion is a new applicant for the fire department, is this young man Wyatt Rassell. He is currently employed at AgriVision full-time. What my goal is with him is since he lives in Marcus, I would like to bring him on as a member to take day call because that's where I'm the shortest on members, is day call. So right now, we are updating our bylaws and all that, so it's the process. Cause right now, we don't have anything that really says. Right now, it just says city of Plena and within so many miles can be members, so we don't have out of town. So what I'm changing is so anybody that lives or works in the city of Plena, that's the new verbiage. So it just, unfortunately, that got put on the back of the list.
So in here, under regular membership.
Yeah.
It says eighteen years of age and resides within the primary sponsor area. So that's what you're talking about, changing?
Yeah. To.
Like an addendum to it.
Yeah, just amend it, so.
We leave it, I mean, leave it as is, but add this, or people can help during the day.
Cause I mean, we would gain at least, well, we gained two because Zach Kellen works there too and they're automaticate, we're automaticate with Granville. So we gained Zach as a member. So this would be a second one we've gained. The ambulance and their bylaws right now, it has lived the work in holding us, so. I'm just trying to figure out ways to increase our membership, especially in day hours because I'm, unfortunately, we live in a community that a majority of people commute out of. So this is a way to gain a member.
That's a good idea.
Right. I will make the motion to accept him.
I'll second.
And then we have the update. And then get the update of the bylaws and stuff, yeah?
Yeah, I think the call today, of the six guys that were there, three of them were city guys.
The unfortunate part of, I had a heart doctor appointment with my son, so, I mean.
The luck, well, I mean, very, you know, and to bring. Point up that Kelly brings up. So this year, we've had an abnormally busy year. So here's thirty-one run reports for this year so far.
So, yeah, it hasn't been quite a year and we still have a lot of harvest to go, so that's why.
Were you lining up for the parade the other day?
Yes, we were actually.
Yep, they were.
Lining up for the parade when we had a fire call.
I know, I couldn't believe it.
Yeah.
And some people thought you were just doing sirens, or no, I was like, get out.
Yeah, I had one person like standing in the way, staring at me like, hey, no, I'm not starting the parade. I like.
But they thought you were gonna be the first one. Trying to get out of here. Yep.
So yes.
Did you have enough guys that day?
Yes, we had enough guys and I firmly believe that we would not have been there in our trucks. It would've gotten an astounding call by the time.
Oh, really?
A typical response, and yeah.
It was a good thing you were ready to roll. So there is some pluses for parades.
Yeah. Yeah, and Sutherland was out on a haul at that St. Titan.
I didn't know Brett or did Primgar come?
So yeah, thankfully Primgar and Calumet were able to come to the parade and we left our one truck here that we wouldn't have used anyways. So yeah, we took our, took the old ninety-one on their last parade call that day, so.
Yeah. For farewell, right?
Yeah, farewell.
Okay, so any of these fire trucks?
All right, well.
Well, we're not there yet. We gotta approve.
We kinda saw a squirrel and got off on.
I approved it.
No, you, you made it. Oh, a second.
I seconded it. Now we gotta vote on that now.
Yep, in favor of approving the applicant. Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, applicant approved.
Okay, so the exciting part of my, my report is Monday at ten thirty, we officially take delivery of our new fire truck.
Woo-hoo. Like next Monday?
Yes.
Do you have to go to Des Moines to get it?
So yeah, we're going to Des Moines to Reliant Service Center and we'll take delivery there. So like almost two years later, we finally.
Yeah, I can't really believe it's.
I think when you guys get back, we need to have a little bit of a parade, you driving around town.
Yeah, so everybody is welcome to the meeting Monday night. So we actually have a fire meeting Monday night.
At seven?
At seven, everybody's welcome. We'll have the truck there and then.
Do you have to be there to get it?
Ten thirty.
That's what you said.
So then at some point in the very near future, I'm hoping to have a. So, then at some point in the very near future, I'm hoping to have a public open house. So the community can come see it.
Yeah.
I wonder if during the truck retrieve thing.
Well, yeah, we'll have a truck retrieve. So yeah.
Good.
So yeah.
Seven.
Excellent.
Cool. Place forward or do you have?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll unload the, our old.
Old pumper.
Old pumper that we're replacing and then it'll go.
Did we ever figure out what we're gonna put that up for bid, our old iron, gonna put something on?
We kinda slightly discussed it, but I've never made any.
Yeah, cause we talked about your Brent truck and.
Yeah.
Are we coming with a old ambulance?
Um, unfortunately, that's kinda out of the standstill, cause I had it.
Get.
Yeah.
That's fine, this was one of them.
Yeah. This will finally be one thing off my list, as soon as we get the rest of hazmat stuff, will be off my list, so, yeah. So. So yeah, that's.
Well, if you need any resources, you can.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have anything to add to, from any of our committees? The only guy I was gonna point out is the lake trails, there's a new sign out there, if you've been out to see, they've put an interactive sort of educational aspect with the phone QR codes out there and there's, and now every eighth mile, there's a sign and all kinds of extra information. If you haven't walked out there lately, it's obviously a lot easier to do it, but go check it out and.
All the library things?
No, it's a whole new sign that Helfter and Brasser put together with the county.
All Helfter.
Yeah.
That's right, when you knew they were doing it. Go walk towards the lodge, a sign with all the maps and shows the routes and all the fun things.
And then the city of Plena put some money towards that also, or?
That was all there.
Cause I see it said at the bottom on there, something to the effect shop, play and stay in Plena or something to that effect, and so we, we didn't.
They got all of it, I think, through the grant, they're not covering it up. For O, O B T C D or something like there's, it's down at the bottom there, the grant, it's an alphabet soup thing, but. Have to pay for that.
Probably reverting, probably.
But it's. Anyway, so that's cool. And yes, we talked about building permits, you're gonna have revert back to them as well, I think that's already been happening. Uh, any other comments from council members?
I thought at one time we talked about doing a sign on our Maple Street on those two.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Um, I don't know how that's coming or has it, or I know you talked about it too.
I, I know the sign frames, I think, weren't you getting a price on those, on for sale signs?
Oh, um. Which we called and Sam was making us some.
Amberwood. Oh, Amberwood, oh, Todd, Adaman?
Sebas was. Sebas was.
Oh, okay.
Sebas was, we got the frames from Hademan, we're gonna.
Put something out there.
Get some signs.
I keep forgetting.
Made Sebas, Sebas was.
Or the, what's his name?
Where they took the house down, that we can put something, so that people know it's for sale, I mean.
Oh.
Otherwise, nobody knows that we got two lots that are sitting there for a house or whatever.
Is there any way we can put that on our city website or are we able to add some?
Well, that would be fine too.
Right, yeah, definitely we can add that on to it, but we have, well, we have one over by Steve, still for sale.
That's what they're talking about.
No, no.
The Bush lot.
We're talking by Don E.
Oh, the Bush lot.
Oh, you're talking Bush now, but I'm talking people.
But I mean, let's get them all on that.
Yeah, true.
How, how is, since that got brought up, how is that, did that ever, the Bush lot, did that ever get transferred into their name?
I don't know when they closed or closed.
It had to be by August something. Here we are by October.
It was supposed to be done, I was guessing it was taken care of, I think it was handed to Tish to finish it.
I think somebody took possession of them, so there's new owners of.
I think there's new.
See, we had no control over that though, except for they had to just sign that.
We approved that.
Right, I just didn't know like if they've turned in a building permit and, because they have two years from when they signed that.
Right.
Did, did, did they have to sign another paper, the new owners saying that they had two years?
They did.
They did.
Originally, as far as I know.
But I did not get turned in.
I won't turn, come in until next year.
Yeah, cause it, I mean, the permit only lasts a year.
Right, same apply now.
Turn it in next spring or whenever we start.
Have we heard anything on the Johnson property?
Nope, nothing yet.
That's gotta be closed.
It's gotta be closed, yeah, I thought it was.
How's some of my riches have been?
They have a three-year.
They have a year, so they got another year coming up, but they're, they're hopefully gonna start.
They're what, did you say? They're hopefully doing something.
They are starting?
Okay, good.
Okay.
Yeah, cause the last time I talked, talked to them, they said they, they got their budget and it was a little more than they expected.
Oh, I'm sure.
So they had it, they were looking at, yep.
I know that one time they talked about maybe getting some way to, like how Richards had that. How they could go out in the basement that way, so we gotta watch that too, you know, prevent it, cause. You know, all the parking there too, you know, cause that's gonna be.
I think all they requested was one little section.
Was it, okay. Cause actually, we're Richards, we, the city actually owns Cloropin there too, so. Did we ask all their stuff?
We stopped, we stopped at their properties.
Um. I just saw this the other day and he was brought up that one game like tennis.
Pickleball.
Pickleball.
Yes.
This, is there that many people interested in?
I don't know.
Can we put one like back behind the outfield in the city park right there, or?
Not someone.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could, well, we'll talk, we could get quotes for maybe a spot there or redoing part of, or half of the parking lot there, but Swanson, we'll see if the school will help on that one up.
Oh, the, the tennis court ones, okay.
It's no holding.
And how's that tennis court, is it, is cracked out and everything?
I'll have to give permission from the turkey vultures. They like it. It's a long fence there, yeah.
I think we should put it up by the city park.
Yeah, that'd be a cool place.
I think we.
I think, but behind the outfield, right there, there's a big open area there, I think that'd be kinda cool.
Well, even, even, you know, where, like during jamboree days where they park their, where they park the food truck and stuff there that this year, and they had those inflatables and stuff.
Right.
I mean, even if it was a pickleball court.
They could still set up.
They could still set up there.
Yep.
And have concrete to be on.
Right.
The inflatables here probably want them on grass, but.
Yeah, a big open area, right?
I think, is, who would have something like that, who would make the contract?
There, Brasser sent me some pictures from lunch, said he just had done it, he had the brand name for the nets and the whole information, so if.
We should see about, is there any kinda.
I think you just send them a note back and say.
Plugging from recreational stuff, you know, our parks, is there?
I mean, I guess, I think I'm on the parks committee, I guess, if you.
You two are on it, I think, aren't you, Lexi and?
Yep, Lexi, Jay.
Yeah, Mark.
Maybe you get all the Brasser and he gets an apple.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're gonna city measure out, cause we had the measurements. Cause I wouldn't wanna put a fence around it, cause then it's so limited and.
Can you text me Brasser somewhere?
But I think that'd be a good project for next spring then. You know, throw a little budget money into it, maybe we can find a grant of some type, you know.
Well, maybe we could even go into that O'Brian County one, cause I don't think anybody around here's got one, so it'd be something new. And that's gotta be done by April fifteenth or something submitted.
April first.
What's, what's that, what's that O'Brian County one?
O'Brian County Foundation Grant.
Yep, and you just submit what you need and what you're looking for.
Right to county?
Yep. And then there's that committee that hands it out.
Just ten thousand dollar maximum grant.
Yep. So.
You pour a good amount of concrete.
Well, that would help. And then you would be good at writing up the grant, Brasser and them.
I think in the city park would be.
I never thought of that.
Republican center field right up there.
Kinda keep it in, kinda keep it in the center of town and.
And you got electric running close to that.
Are you getting the lights up?
In the, in the power.
In the plug in?
That'll be part notification phase. Probably don't need them this winter.
Well, no, but.
Right on your to-do list, way down there, Kelly.
I'd like to change gears a little bit, one thing I wanna talk about is, I didn't see on the, you know, last week, we, I didn't see it on the agenda, last week, we talked about a resolution for the street vultures.
Oh, that's right.
And I didn't see it on the agenda.
It's not.
And I just, I guess I'm wondering why, do we need?
According to League of Cities, which differs from apparently some other information that was obtained and shared with me just minutes before we started, that League of Cities said it is not a necessary resolution requiring to close streets.
Cause it's a temporary.
It's just temporary, it's not like if you were gonna vacate an alley or, you know.
Or change something.
Take a street out of, out of the map, you know.
I can see that makes sense.
It's just a temporary, one day, like a couple hours.
October deal and for a parade for the kids and all that, we don't have to worry about it, just that we know about it.
So then you are familiar with the ordinance, the city ordinance then, like it says in there.
And what does it say?
On chapter two, you can look it up, chapter two, article eight, it's under nuisances. I guess it defines nuisance, shall be whatever is injurious or health, indecent or offensive to the sense of an obstacle to the free use of property, as essentially to interfere with the comfortable area of life or property. So underneath that definition in B, it says blocking public and private ways. You know, it's obstruction or encumbering of fences, buildings or otherwise public roads, private ways, streets, alleys, common landings, places or burying grounds. So public roads and streets and alleys are in that, so, and that's in our ordinance, so do we?
Update that?
No, I guess.
So, so you're saying that we have to do a resolution?
What page does it have that on? You have that on the bottom?
It looks like. Looks like page one fifty.
It's on traffic information, it just not say anything about.
Chapter two, article eight.
And this. And you're reading under what letter?
Uh, D.
D. Yeah. And that says that would be a nuisance, so that would be a nuisance violation then if they did that, is that what you're saying?
Well, I don't know, I guess I'm asking if we, do we need a resolution for that, or since it's an ordinance, or how does that work?
Will we update the ordinance?
No, the ordinance is.
I think our ordinance needs to be updated.
You can't, because that's the code of Iowa, that's Iowa code.
It's an Iowa code there.
Yeah.
Well, then to me, she should, the lady in League of Cities should know that too.
Yeah, so we can't change the ordinance, cause that's an Iowa code, do you see it there?
Yeah, then let's ask, find out if we have to, or if we can find out, yeah. Cause it would make it a lot easier that we don't need one every time we do some little temporary thing.
Well, so we gotta do this by next, by next meeting to actually, to, cause it's.
Cause, I mean, we always, we always did a resolution.
I know, yeah, we always have.
But it's October.
But if we don't have to, that would be a lot simpler.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, just next we.
Well, I mean, we have time constraints, but. Yeah, we have time constraints, but.
Yeah, it'll have to be next, the next meeting.
Right, find out for sure where we're at with that.
If we, if we. And the better, it should be explained a little better.
Yeah, cause that, I mean, that's a.
You're definitely out.
That's an ordinance that we adopted and we'll use the Iowa code to do that, most of these, most of all of our ordinances in the ordinance book are the Iowa code. Not all of them, there's a few that are not, but.
In the chief's seat's top, it seems like that one, just looking at an outside, since it's under the nuisance situation, that that would be more a situation where a private citizen is encroaching upon the alleyway or the streets, you know, themselves versus a public event. I don't think they would categorize that one as a nuisance situation, as though if I were just, you know, I block my alley and my neighbors can't use it.
Right, I can see that, right.
That's what I.
That would make more sense, this is just a temporary deal that is closing for.
Right.
An hour or two, or a little longer when they do the chamber stuff, but.
So there might be something else in there, but I would think that nuisance section wouldn't apply to what you're talking about, to the year, community events downtown.
That would make sense.
Yeah.
I think we also need to look at updating our ordinance.
But we start, have to get them put in the list.
Cause isn't it, I think it's like every five or ten years?
Every five years.
Every five years, so.
I've heard, so I'm saying ten.
No.
Denise told me that too.
Yeah, the state code, the state code requires every five years, if you make an ordinance change, you have to put that up, every, it's either every year, every year or every five years. And it's hard to interpret that code, but the way it seems to me is if you change an ordinance and you have that ordinance, then you have to insert that into your, into your book. And then in five years, if those ordinances that you've changed stay in place, you have to update the entire book.
Quote five.
Five years.
Yep. Yeah, no, I've heard it though, I asked Carol when they did it, that's where I'm coming from, she just said ten years. And we had our last one in six. But I know we don't have our last ones on that list if you pull them up, January of twenty-one is the last one I've seen.
Well, I don't know what our city ordinance is, but the state code. Code of, okay, a city which does not maintain the city code of ordinances as provided in paragraph B shall compile a code of ordinances at least once every year, every five years. In B, a city may maintain a code of ordinances either by compiling at least annually or a supplement to the code of ordinances consisting of all new ordinances and amendments to ordinances, which will become effective during the previous year in adopting the supplement by resolution or adding at least annually new ordinances and amendments to the ordinance code of ordinances itself. So what that's saying is if we change, if we change an ordinance in our book, we have to insert that ordinance in our, in our code book at least every year.
Sounds like one's adhering to it annually, so.
Yep, and then, that was B, and then in C, a city which does not maintain the city code of ordinances as provided in paragraph B shall compile a code of ordinances at least once every five years.
So is this code of ordinances like in a, I'm just getting a spreadsheet, so you can just go in and insert or delete things? You have to type them all on, but when I looked at them just on the computer, that's how I was looking up a couple different things, and you can go in there and see what we've updated. Okay. But I don't think they've been, for a while now, all our ordinance changes are actually listed now, and we've got them. So we have the original ordinance and then the changes to be the what then? Changes are all there though. Okay. That's what needs to be updated there, and then you do the actual big one where you have somebody come in and they do it.
And then it says that the council shall hold a public hearing on the proposed code adoption, which would be the, the new ordinance, and the city clerk shall publish a notice of the hearing as provided in section three sixty-two point three within thirty days, and then the council may adopt the new ordinance. So that's just kind of a formality, I think we do that already.
Yep, we do it like at least two times or three.
Yeah, but I did a little research on that and it has to be at least updated every year and at bare minimum every five years.
So we're already delinquent.
So, yeah, we're already past that.
Well, I mean, I have a number, like, can I, like, that does that, can I call and see like?
Well, there was a guy that had called this summer, I think I've got his number.
Maybe it's the same person we're thinking.
That could be, we'd have to touch base.
Yep.
Because I forgot it and he had called about doing it. So he'd be going and quote five or whatever. I guess he goes in and finds everything that's been updated for ordinances. I guess he goes in and finds everything that's been updated for ordinances for us and then.
Is he a private guy, or is he working state?
Um, I don't know. I have a phone number and the name.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Phone number and name is all I got.
Cause basically, we, we follow, you know, our ordinance follows, mostly follows the code, the state code. And then if the state code changes, then our, then our, our ordinances have to change along with that state code. If we're using the code.
Well, yeah, I was gonna say only, only if, only if it's something that the city is bound to follow the state law. I mean, there's a lot of stuff in there that you, basically the city co-adopted, but unless it's one of those laws that specifically trickle down that you have to follow when the state changes, that you wouldn't necessarily have to change.
Right, it's all states the same. I'll check with you and you, or figure out if we got the same person. Find out what they charge and what they do.
Yep.
That's okay?
Yep.
See where we're at. Cause they need to be updated.
I'm agreeing.
I second.
Yay. Lexi second to adjourn. Questions, or I will call for a vote on favor, adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven twenty-three.
Yes.
Got a minute?
Uh, yep.
Alright.
Yes. What's on your mind, Jay?